Which is a month, a week, a year, or whatever.
Double call.
Yeah, do it the same time.
The way that the the call response works from the nine one one center to us. A call comes in to the center, they dispatch the ambulance, the ambulance goes on the call. The crew decides where the patient needs to go. Usually you can ask the person, then you can take whatever the problem is, and if they wanted to go, let's just say Clinch Memorial. And the problem could be solved at Clinch Memorial, then that's where the person would go. And then the ambulance would get back in service. It's possible that during that time, another call could come out. And the person that called would have to wait until that ambulance is ready. And usually the crew can tell the nine one one center, we'll be ready back in service in five minutes. That way the nine one one center knows that they don't need to dispatch another ambulance from another county. Uh which is called mutual aid, which is how everything is done in EMS in the United States of America. And so the crew would normally let the dispatcher know, we're gonna be back in service at this this timeframe. They also let the county, the the dispatch system know, the crew will let them know, if they're going to go out of county. If they're gonna go to Waycross with the patient, or if they're gonna go to Valosta with the patient. They'll let them know so that they can be ready if another call comes in. The nine one one center could dispatch another county uh by mutual aid into Clinch County. The frequency of which that actually happens, that we're able to document. Almost perfectly is because we have put another ambulance in Clinch County to operate. We did that outside of the contract for a reason. In order to attract people into Clinch County to work, you have to give them hours. So if you don't have enough hours to work those people, then they go to other places. So we thought of a brilliant plan to use the second ambulance as a non emergency ambulance. And attract staff into this area. And those people will get the hours that they need, and they will be able to be utilized if somebody called in sick, or if somebody wanted to take vacation. And we wouldn't have to bring people from other areas that don't know the geography of Clinch County. That's been working fairly flawlessly. And um so those times that that second ambulance of ours is dispatched, we're able to identify those a hundred percent. So we know that that second ambulance that we placed here, Monday through Friday, from nine to five, sometimes longer, sometimes a little bit shorter. But we know that that ambulance responds to about one call a week, one nine one one call per week. Um when we talked in the past about putting another ambulance here. Because we do know, as an ambulance service and a EMS provider, we know that there's times when the ambulance will be gone. And we know that that puts um everybody's hearts in a different position when the ambulance is not there and we need it. So we suggested possibly looking into another ambulance. And uh that cost is so much greater than the initial cost of the first ambulance. Because the first ambulance runs seventeen hundred calls a year. Where the second ambulance would only run fifty two calls a year. So there's no offset of billing to offset the cost. So you have a hundred percent labor, a hundred percent fuel, a hundred percent ambulance insurance, payments, all those things. Uh medical supplies, which is a a large amount of money to absorb for a small county like yours. So we absolutely one hundred percent know that we're running fifty two calls a year with that ambulance. And if we're off by a little bit our estimate, because the the nine one one center. Director is a brand new person, and she didn't know how to tally up how many times they had called another service, and she wasn't even sure if they were really tracking that. Uh we've been talking with her about doing that now, since there's definitely some interest in it. But to tally that, there's not a way to really perfectly track how many times that would be. So our best estimate has been that if you just took that number and doubled it, and just say that it happens twice as many times as we think that it does. There'll be a hundred calls a year, or two calls a week. And that's that's the difference. It's very easy to plan for a large problem if you have a lot of money. It's extremely difficult to prepare for that call volume if you don't have the tax base to support it. So that's uh we're all kind of in a catch twenty two on that. Um everybody wants more ambulances. We've had trouble staffing this particular area. Because of how remote things are here, and because of the shortage of paramedics and EMTs. And uh Jason's idea to put another truck over here to keep the staff here, has really made that really work. And we took an interest in the staff, because we've always wanted paramedics to be on every shift. We've put them through training, so this month, they should, there should, every single shift should have a paramedic on it. So that's been um a lot of work for us to get done, but we've had some dedicated staff that have been willing to go through that training. So that's gonna be an advantage that that uh you'll see here for many years to come. Um and there's more interested in going to school, so we're we're hoping that that'll continue on. They've seen how the school worked out, they've seen that they can pass the tests, so their confidence has been boosted. That's that's how the system works, and that's how many calls that we are aware of. And um and if you were to add another shift right now, our second ambulance works Monday through Friday, nine to five. And that's the peak call volume, by the way. That ambulance is not set up to dedicate it to nine one one calls. It runs everything that it can run out of Clinch Memorial and Valosta, anything over in this area to pay for it. Um so it has to generate enough call volume to cover the cost. In doing that, if you were to add another ambulance twenty four hours a day. The current building that we're in only supports two people twenty four hours a day. So there would need to be some adjustment to the quarters. Um in order for that to to be accommodated, if that was something that even came into play. Right now, the way that the the situation is, it works pretty good for somebody that's only there during the day for twelve, for you know, eight to ten hours.
Charles, about six months ago, I I called you, Jacqueline and myself. And I asked you, because we've we've had some concerns, I asked you what it would cost. But then, to put another ambulance, the whole emergency bank twenty four seven on. And you said you'd have to do some figuring. You called us back two, three days later, and said it would be four hundred thousand dollars. A year, extra from what we're paying you. And I'm correcting that, to the best of your knowledge.
Yes, sir, that's exactly what we said. And keep in mind that was a while back, before gas went crazy. Um and before um finding staff and uh pay scales went crazy. But yes, I I would say we're still kind of in that ballpark.
Okay. Anybody else? Lee told, asked Charles anything about ambulance service, and anybody knows it, he should, he runs it.
Roger, biggest thing, we do know that we have a problem, and we've been aware of this problem for, like you said, over, probably over a year. That you know, there are times that we're getting called, where we weren't able to meet the call volume that was there. And there will probably be times when we get called, we get two full time ambulances, that we will not meet the call volume, or we'll need three. But that'd be very, 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 very seldom. And uh but uh certainly, as commissioner, I do see the need. For us to try to look and see what are the options, what are the options that are open to us? To be able to put a second full time ambulance there. And that comes down very seriously, it would be probably four hundred twenty five, four feet is what you'll probably say. And going back to what y'all said, I sent the class over in Savannah on Thursday. And make a bid, one, one, one of the commissioners were there, had to make a bid, and he says. You know, if somebody asks about their budget, about trying to negotiate, or keep their budget, and he said, I wished I had that problem, because I couldn't find personnel. And then another guy said, now, I wished I knew what county he was from. But he said, right now, their sheriff's department was short staffed, forty people. And they just, I mean, they're they're difficult, very difficult to find. And uh but uh but certainly, you know, I am willing to take a look into this thing as an option, as to what we can do. Of course, if we did that, there, we're going to have to find a funding source, and of course, our biggest funding source would be going up in the military. You're probably looking at about two mills and being able to cover it, maybe not quite two mills to be able to cover that. There's one other option, Mr. Chairman, that we can look into as a board. Uh we know, I've worked with this several days, and I'm trying to figure out what we can do. An option that we may can possibly do is looking at coming back and asking for a, you know, an emergency splosh, you know, for, you know, to serve emergency situations. And and put, and and let the people vote, and see if they want to take a vote in another one cent splosh. In order to go straight to emergency situation, mandated ambulance services, to be able to fund that. And we're probably raising somewhere in the neighborhood, what, seven hundred thousand dollars, probably seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, with the way things were coming in now.
That's right.
I think the past month, like seventy thousand dollars, which they finally started taxing online shopping, so we're starting to get some benefits back for that. Counties in Georgia are. But uh but that would pay for, you know, for both ambulances. That'd pay for our whole entire service if we did that, and everybody would pay it for that, even people that pass through would be paying that. And it certainly would solve our situation, but, Mr. Chairman, I would really like for us to ask administrator to look in. And 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 along with Chad, and the legal aspects of that, as to if with, if that would be a possibility. Of coming up with a secondary, with a second, with another splosh, splosh, raises nine, nine cents, what it raises to. And it does that that splosh to emergency services, and split it out pretty well, and you know, in what we do. And then have the, you know, taxpayers vote to see if they want to put that splosh in place.
Now, uh on this. Last tax. We're county, you had the choice of go ahead and put in that one percent on. Or wait to the vote and put it on, we're county, put theirs on, and they went to eight percent immediately. Then they put it for the voters, and they they voted it in. But they're only charging eight percent because the state wouldn't, wouldn't do the nine cents.
That was a double T splosh, is what that was.
That's right.
That's not, that's, that's, that's not, this is, this is.
This is, I I'll agree, this is different, but we got to find out.
But that's what I'm saying, we need to ask, you know, our attorney, you know, you know, looking at and see if we can legally can do another splosh. And uh then let the voters vote for it, and let them decide if they want to do it.
Honestly, I think that's a brilliant idea, but I, everybody know I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I'm not in favor of that, um the military rate in any capacity, but if we can look at something like that, put it on the table for the um citizens to vote on it, I think that would be an excellent idea.
Well, like, right now, if you look at our tax digest, our property owners throughout this county are paying care of what's eighty five, eighty percent. Of our budget. And I've had a lot of people that have talked to me about this, and they don't know if they can stand, stand on it.
Whole people can't stand, two or three whole meals.
One of these, you're looking at eighty dollars per hundred thousand, what you're looking at, for two, for two meals. And that's what you're looking at. And uh I would certainly like for us to at least explore. You know, go to a study about the possibility of looking at splosh, that's what I'd love for us to do. Because I would really love to see us get a second ambulance, I really would. It might have to come get me. I'm not, I'm not a young, I'm not a young boy, I might be a big yard to fall out of. I doubt it too, I want to be a lower ton of that. But uh but anyhow, but uh, and uh, have some cheer, and some, I'm gonna cheer, and some be sad, so.
We'd be happy to work with you to get this accomplished.
About two forty last year, about two hundred forty thousand last year, one meal.
Yeah. And I think, like y'all said, we know, we don't know certainty, I think you'd have to almost go two meals, and two forty, that'd be four hundred eighty thousand dollars, and that'd give you a little bit of comfort solid there, if you had to go up to this. But but with the uh, but if we do the splosh, we could actually could possibly, it would give us a relief in the budget. Because through the state right now, what they're sending us in, what is it, Jack, in the flipper? And the flipper, it's dropped from what, nine sixty down to about six eighty this year?
It's gonna cut it down.
It's gonna continue to drop.
Drop, till it ain't there.
In the next three years, we're probably gonna lose another three hundred, we're gonna eventually lose the whole flipper. What we're gonna use, we're gonna lose a million dollars, is what we're gonna end up losing. And so far, we've been able to make it go without raising any taxes, and we haven't raised taxes here in what, I know nine years, eight, nine years, fourteen, fourteen years, we haven't raised taxes here. But anyhow, and we continue to be able to operate, because that's been able to do that, because of the added property values. And good management by our administrators and our bookkeepers. And uh but uh but like I say, you know, that's something I would love for this board to. To instruct Jacqueline and Chad to look into the possibility of a splosh, if that is even a possibility, because I don't know. How y'all feel about it, the rest of you?
It's fine, me, if, if, if you want it, I'm, I'm tickled with it, I just don't want to raise taxes. You know, seeing some, if you've seen, if you've seen some of the taxes it would cost some of the people in this county. Large landowners and and our businesses, y'all, one thing we can't do here, is we cannot tax our businesses. We've, we got, we got Malzer, we got Lee Container, we got Connor Holins, and several others. I mean, we can't lose any. I've been in the county, I've been in Stewart County before. And there's a point in time, you can take and and have businesses to start looking to relocate in other areas, you know, where taxes aren't so bad. The last thing we need to do here is lose one, if we lose one of them, we're in trouble. Because I've been there, I've been in Stewart County, and let me tell you also, the hospital was the big, the hospital and school system up there was the biggest employees up there. So y'all figure that one, and I know that was awful, that was bad. And uh, and as I've told people before, if you need somebody to come and talk about, let me talk about how bad Clinch County, if y'all call me, give me about five minutes to get there, I'll explain to them how it is. Because I've been there, I've seen it, I've had to deal with it from a superintendent standpoint. And uh but uh, but if we could do that, I would love for us to do that, Mr. Chairman, if we could do that, take a look at that, study that. That's fine. And see if that would be even an option to us. And if that's not an option, then then where we going? We gonna make some tough decisions. You gonna, you gonna earn your money, what you gonna do then? I ain't, I ain't got no problem earning mine.
I know that, we, and that's what we're gonna do, it's gonna be, do we have a second ambulance? If we get a second ambulance, we gonna raise the military rate two meters.
Yeah.
And here we go, we got to look at it, we got, we got.
Lee, aren't you still here? Lee Martin?
Yes.
Yeah, we give, taxpayers give hospital nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, any way y'all can do without four hundred thousand of that.
I'm, I'm here, we say that.
I'm, I'm.
I'm assuming you didn't want an answer.
I would love to have an answer. I mean, we give y'all nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. This place, when the hospital was almost to shut down, you could, they were sitting in the floors, under the tables, and everywhere else. Oh, I don't know who got the group together, I got a good idea, but I won't call them by name. But hey, we jumped on that, and we saved the hospital from shutting down that Friday, because they couldn't make payroll. We done that. Now, are y'all ready to pay us back? We done, we done done what we need to do, y'all be part of it, now we can put a second ambulance on.
We are providing the very best healthcare in this county. It's probably better than many, many other counties around you. Um and and it takes every penny that you send us.
Okay, all right, well, that's dead in the water.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say one word.
All right, go ahead.
To Lee and and the family. You know, I've watched this thing, y'all, it was on, it was on a rest player, I'm gonna be honest with you, and I'm gonna say this. Angela, you've had to make some tough calls there. You, you might, you might be worse, you might, you might be having more people mad at you than I had, than me, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I just keep them mad at me. And uh but anyhow, but I'll, I'll watch y'all, I get a copy of your budget every month. And I go through it, people say, he gonna come. I do, I got one right there, I'll be going through it tonight, probably, okay? Looking at it, and what I've seen, I've watched it go from a cash flow of about six hundred thousand, the other day got about one point eight, and right now, it's sort of dropped a little bit, about one point five, one point six cash flow, all right? And uh and so somebody, along with her, and along with the board, the new board we got out there, have done a great job. Because I'll be honest with you, I don't think, if we hadn't had that change, I don't think a hospital would be here right now, I really don't. And I'm certainly glad it is, because how many, how many people y'all?
We have a hundred and fifty FTEs.
Hundred and fifty, okay. But I just want to say that, and for whatever it's worth, and 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 then, you know, seriously, we're gonna definitely look into what we can do to come up with a second ambulance. And uh at the same time, you know, looking out for the taxpayers, you know what I'm saying? And considering the taxpayers, because, like I say, the last thing I want to do is see Malzer, or Lee, or Connors, or somebody pulled up and walk out here. I mean, y'all, I mean, it, people just don't understand how bad that would be. It'd be devastating. We watched our general lead one time, you know what I'm saying, and we know how that was.
Is there a difference in the number of ambulances that we had full time prior to COVID than what we have now? Is it the same amount? We always had just one?
We had, we've had three, I mean, the last, right before we took it over, one reason we took it, you know, we, 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 we went this way. Just because we fixed to have to buy two or three brand new ambulances, because the ones we had, they had, they had crutches on them. I mean, Charles even brought a ambulance over, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all correct me. Charles brought a ambulance over here, and put it over here, because the ambulances we had, they were in such bad shape. We didn't know if they were, if they were gonna wire, gonna hold together or not, I mean, and they were doing the best they could.
But we did have two full time ambulances.
You did have two full time staff.
You had two staff, two full time staff?
We had, we had a full time, one full time ambulance, that was the same we've had for years.
There you go.
And then we um created a, a truck that ran transfers from eight day to Monday to Friday.
Transfer, transfers.
Yes.
Charles has got that now.
A lot of difference between, we got that same thing right now. But for somebody being on call and on duty at all time, twenty four seven, y'all have one ambulance, that was. And we could get caught in the same situation.
And our team at times chose to run nine one one calls versus the um.
And y'all had it all, because you had the hospital.
Was there on call staff? Um no, there wasn't on call staff, there's been many things that happened this last few years. And damage has actually affected the workforce, now more people are stepping away from direct patient care. Where you had an influx of nurses and paramedics that never increased, because they're uh burnt out, no one will want to work in that capacity. So there's been a lot of things that's tired of the last few years.
They want to come work at home, instead of working at a private hospital, with that, with that going over there, and dealing with all that situation, and all there, all the time running.
A lot of paramedics like to go to the slower places. Um I do want the board to know that um since we've come here. Uh Angela and the hospital authority have worked with us immensely on many levels, on things that sometimes, I'm not exactly sure what makes it back to everybody. And we've put things in the paper before, and talked about some stuff, but the hospitals has paid. Um some of the previous staff from over there, their insurance, their health insurance payments, which decreases the cost to us having to do it. She's made um equipment purchases for us, helped us buy uh different large ticket items. Um so there's been a lot of work back and forth, as well as loaning us a lot of the equipment that they had for a dollar. Um so since the day that we started the contract, we've been enjoying those things without having to pull it out of our stockpile. Um and without having to go up on the cost of the ambulance service. Randolph County pays five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year for one ambulance. Kind of gives you an idea of where we are, and how well we run things. And uh we really try to keep it as streamlined as it can possibly be. We use all these same ambulances, so they're all gas burners, all the oil changes are the same, the fuel burn is the same. All the same equipment, all the same training, everything is identical, so that it's easy for us to replace and keep track of and train on. And we really try to keep it streamlined, and we are probably the most economic emergency medical service I've run across in southwest Georgia. And um and I want to keep it that way, and that's our intention, and I'll be more than happy to get some firm numbers um to Jacqueline. Uh so that you guys have something hard to work off of. Um I don't see it being any different than the numbers that we've been tossing around here. But I'll get you something hard, firm, so that you know what it will be. But anyway, thank you very much for the help that you've given us, we really appreciate it.
Two things, when we took, took and opened the bids, Valosta, Hospital Central Medical Center, correct me if I'm wrong, uh Jacqueline. Their bid for two full time ambulances, fully staffed, was one point two million dollars, is that correct?
That's right.
One point two million dollars.
And the one ambulance from Upie, Penokee, was three hundred and sixty.
Yeah, and uh and the other thing too, you know me, I've talked to Charles about how y'all were doing. And the hospital working with him, he said it couldn't be no better, okay? But you know me, I'm gonna go find out. And uh and uh and uh, but anyhow, he had nothing but good things to say. Thank y'all for that relationship.
Okay, you're welcome, you're welcome, they're easy to work with. Very, very open lines of communication, even when we step on our own toes, so yeah.
Charles, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, about two weeks, uh they've been on my rung around here, telephone calls, ambulance, this and that, you know. Nobody knows the facts, because they don't call and get the facts, well, I do. They said that the boy laid out there on the baseball field, over forty five minutes waiting on the ambulance. Well, I just, I didn't call you, didn't call them, so I called nine one one, I said, somebody. Out there get me the recordings, the disc, you know, everything's recorded. Of when the call came to nine one one for an ambulance to the baseball field. And they did, and I forgot the time, it was seven, oh, seven oh three?
Nineteen oh three.
Nineteen oh three, that's seven oh three, yeah. And uh, they were on their way back to Valosta, carrying a patient. And then thirty minutes, exactly, they pulled up at the baseball field and got out. So it wasn't forty five minutes or longer, I want everybody to know that. And when they had the, on the Thursday night before that, they had to deal at the rec park. Where they had two guys run together and had some head, thrown head injuries, maybe, I hope they did, and I hadn't heard. But uh, they just couldn't understand why it took so long for an ambulance to get there. Jacqueline, give them the times off the tape.
It was eighteen oh three, um and then they got there at eighteen oh seven, so four minutes.
Yeah.
I'm very proud of that.
Well, I, I mean, you know, people, they can sit here, and they say, oh, it takes an hour, it does most times, don't. You, you, when you're in a panic, when you need something, you, you seem to lose track of time. So the ambulance service, in my opinion, is doing great.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Um I do want you to know one more thing, we are, we are not perfect. And sometimes our people, this, you went to the nine one one center for your information. Once we, me and you and Jacqueline talked, I went to the nine one one center for my information. And then I compared that to what my paramedics had in there, because sometimes they'll catch a word, and they'll want to make something better than it, than it should be. So we compare those two pieces of information, and and make sure that that's correct. And then we have one more thing that they don't know about, which is an ambulance tracker. So we know where that ambulance was when it got the call, and how long it took it to get there. So when we talked that day, I was actually looking at the ambulance tracker, so that I could see exactly where it was. And it go back, it goes back, how many days, is it ninety?
Yeah, it goes.
It goes, it goes a long way back, so if there's a big problem, we can get on it pretty quick, and then we can, you know, save all that information. So if you ever have an issue like that, uh Jason and I can find out all the stuff, and as Angela can tell you, and other people that we deal with, other hospitals. Uh we're gonna tell you when we're wrong. Um my dispatcher told me one time, she called everybody, and I asked her, did you call them on our phone or your phone? Because if she called them on her phone, I was gonna make her take a picture of it and show it to me. She knows what I'm gonna ask, so she said, no, I called it on our phone, the business, the business phone. Well, there wasn't any phone call on that line like she said that there was. So when I was talking to our um hospital administrator that was asking me the question, I said, I want you to know. That she did not make that phone call like she told me that she did. So I'm gonna be honest with you. Um the other thing I found out was, if the person that she was gonna call was gonna be able to do the job, which I found out they weren't gonna be able to. So we were lucky, that even though she didn't make the call, nothing could have happened. But we follow up all the way, and that's the only way that we're gonna get better, that's the only way that we can stand in front of a room like this. And and have you guys say some good things about us, because we want it to be good, every single time, and we don't want a bad outcome. And it's sad when sometimes a person has to wait for an ambulance. It's, it's an unfortunate thing, just trust me, being the guy that has to deliver those ambulances, it's a thing that happens more often than I would like for it to happen, but.
Not this is county.
No, sir, no, you're, every single county, and and I would say that you guys, not just because we run it, you're in a very good situation, you have a hospital here. Um that's, that's almost unheard of anymore. Um and every single county is calling me, because every other place is dropping the ball, and everything is getting more and more expensive. And and I want to help them, but I'm real selective of who I help. And and I want to help them, but I'm real selective of who I help. And um I appreciate everything that you guys are to us and how open you've been with communication to us. And you just let me know anything that we can possibly do. If you have any problems of anybody calling you and you, you want to get the heat off of you.
I, I, I'm good with heat. I ain't got no problem.
Just give them my number. Tell them to call me and I'll be happy to answer their questions.
I, I, but I, I, I usually say, give me about five minutes, I'll have a truce and call them right back. I, I never refuse to make the call back.
Well, if you're in a hurry and you want to give it to me, please don't, don't, don't feel bad about punning it to me. That's what I do.
And I appreciate that.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Lee, Mrs. Lee said.
I just wanted to say one thing on behalf of the hospital authority, and that is, when you hear the number of um concerns that we've heard about this issue, it says, for us, the hospital authority, and that's what we are looking at. Is there, and Henry, what you said, is there any way we can make it better?
Mm-hmm. I saw us battling making this better.
So that, you know, we're not dropping this issue. We will continue to look at it and look at it with you and and see where we can improve because we, we don't want to settle.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take and have Jacqueline and Chad look into the possibility of a splosh. And then we'll continue with uh with Gold Star looking at what the cost is gonna be for a second ambulance. And then we'll continue to study this and we'll move toward some kind of conclusion on a second ambulance. Is that correct? Is that what we're gonna do?
That's, that's what y'all say. That's fine.
Am I good with that?
I, I, I'm good with that.
Deborah, am I good with that?
Can't you all raise taxes? Huh?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right. All right. Chad, you got anything you need to talk with us about? You don't? I have, you mean, most of the, uh, adjourned.
So long.
Second.
Uh most than second to adjourn.